Welcome to the study session. Today is March 9, 2022, and we will start off tonight with a study session on budget and contracts. This will be presented by our Chief Financial Officer, Lana Berry, and this will be the 2223 Budget and the Contracts. Mrs. Berry?
All right. Madam President, members of the Board, good evening. Tonight, there is going to be a few of us that actually talk about budgets and contracts, so that you, tonight, when you have an action item, you are able to make some decisions on those when they come up on the consent agenda or on another action item. So I'm going to go ahead and begin. The agenda for tonight, I'm going to talk a little bit about the Governor's Budget, and then that helps us because the start of our process begins when the Governor actually presents his budget in January. That helps us in CUSD in the sense of we know how much we're working with, or at least what we think we're working with at that point. So we start with the Governor's Budget, and then we work back from that point. We then go and talk to our Budget Committee, and we go over concerns and needs, and the same thing happens with our Super Q Committee. So we're going to talk tonight about those Budget Committee recommendations, and then our Super Q goes hand in hand during the same timeframe. Super Q goes on, which is our classified staff, our certified and administrative staff, and we talk about salary and benefit items. And then we're going to talk to you a little bit about contract language, because tonight you're going to be asked to approve contracts and the actual language, and then the contracts. And then we'll talk a little bit about our benefit package, because we're renewing that for next year. We've got our renewal rates on that, and our team has been working through the benefit side of everything. And then the last thing we want to do is just talk through timelines, because we're going to go over the next few months, what's going to take place, starting tomorrow, all the way through July, when you adopt a final budget. Now, I did start with the Governor's Budget, but one thing I want to say is that we send out what's called the MP 5000s. It was a term started by Joel Worth years ago for, it stands for New Programs 5000. So when you hear that, it's become like an acronym for NP 5000. But really, what it stands for is in its new programs, over $5,000. So when someone needed something new that was above $5,000 or outside of their budget, they would have to either put a position in, some supplies, purchase services, if they needed something in construction that we aren't doing, they could have put a request in. We give that out in December to our staff. They get that back before the break, and then we're ready to rock and roll in January. So when the Governor's Plan comes out, we kind of have an idea, and then we work on that for a couple of months. So just wanted to update you on that, so that when you are reviewing NP 5000s, you know what that is, New Programs Over $5,000. So right off the bat, the Governor's Budget that came out in January. Now, usually, if you look at history, you see that the Governor's Budget usually stands, and usually, there's additional things that are added on to that. Usually, it's never less than the Governor's Proposal. History's always shown that it's typically in front of the Governor, the Governor's Amount Plus More. And so there's a few initiatives that were put out by the Governor. Even though there is a large surplus, there's only about $323 million that actually went to the new K-12 investment amounts in public education, plus another $100 million from federal dollars for one-time amounts for summer school. We just got the information on the application grant this past week for summer school. So a couple of things in his proposal was inflation increase by 2%. So when Prop 123 was settled, it allowed us to get at least 2% or inflation. Unfortunately, it's the lesser of the two. So even though inflation is at 7.5% right now, we are only getting 2%, because it's the lesser of the two. If inflation was 1.7, we would only get 1.7. We get the lesser of the two. So that's unfortunate, but at least we're getting 2%. Operation Excellence, this is a piece that the Governor has put in place. It started with originally when we were doing an opportunity weight, and we were doing Project Rocket, if you can remember those things back prior to COVID. And then it's kind of changed over time. And now, his Operation Excellence is for CND schools. It's $58 million, but it's really an opportunity, unfortunately, or I think it's a little bit unfortunate, where it's charter schools can educate public schools and get paid an additional portion, a couple thousand dollars more, to educate those students. Or our district could go into a different district and get funded at a couple thousand dollars more. But there's no opportunity for our district to get $2,000 more for our kids. So you have to go into a different district, either a charter or a different district, and then support those kids. There's been some changes in House Bill 2808, but unfortunately, it's not what we originally started with the Opportunity Weight and Project Rocket. And so there definitely needs to be some changes that really, for us to feel like it's impacting public education, district public education. School capital needs, there was an additional $93 million in building renewal. They're funding new construction. We don't qualify for new construction anymore. We have maximized that with our latest high school was the last time that we'll probably qualify for any new high school construction or an elementary we haven't qualified for for a number of years, because we're declining in that area, and increasing in the junior high, high school area. School capital needs, so that's just the building renewal piece, because they're out of money, just so you know, on the building renewal side. We are applying, Frank Fletcher applies for as many grants as he can underneath the school facilities, building renewal grant system, but there's only so much money. Once they are out, then they're out. So they're asking for additional money, even in this fiscal year, to support more requests. And we put those in, but again, it's based on the need. $93 million to cover the entire state, for example, is not a lot of money. Results-based funding, there's an additional chunk in there in the Governor's Proposal of $61 million. That's on top of the existing amount that's in place now. There's also a request to have some school choice transportation, be able to allow charter schools to access transportation, and then also for school districts to potentially go into other people's boundaries to pick up students. We're a lot, we've been allowed to do that. Our district has not participated in that. There has been a district that has participated in that in the past, but this would give charter schools and different other schools the potential of some transportation funding. And then the Civic Center, Civic's Excellence Bonus is money for passing the civics test, kind of similar to the AP exams that are passed. That would be how it would be distributed to teachers, a portion of that, and then a portion would probably go to the schools, similar to the CCEIP, or in a sense, the Advanced Placement Stipends that are put in place by the state. The last piece is the summer school portion. It's $100 million. It was your application, just got released last week on this. It's to fund in-person summer school. It's not to fund virtual summer school. You can have a hybrid if you need to, but it's not, you cannot have solely virtual summer school. It has to be in-person. It's up to eight weeks. I think there's some criteria in there that allows us, because we don't have eight weeks, we only have seven and a half. I think you have to have at least two weeks, and there's some criteria all in that. I believe Dr. Gilbert and Dr. Edgar are the ones working through those pieces with the help of all of us to put together the summer school piece that's potentially funded through the state. So that's the Governor's Budget. So we take that into consideration, and we get our NP 5000s in from our principals and our directors and the superintendents. But during that time, we're very concerned about where is the overall budget? How does that look? And how is that going to impact, you know, when we talk with the Budget Committee and the Super Q Committee, and we consider different things? What are things we have to remember and look at? And so we try to educate the Budget Committee and our Super Q team, which is our classified, certified administrators, and our Budget Committee is staff members plus community members. I go over a presentation with both to go over School Finance 101, and then try to educate as much as we can in the short period of times that we do have, a little bit about where we're at with our growth. As you know, we're still growing down the Valvista corridor, but our high schools are still growing, junior highs are growing, elementaries are declining, birth rates are declining, increased housing costs are up, and then, of course, there's an increased options of choice schools in our area. So we really feel like our ADM is pretty leveled off and will eventually decrease. We do feel like next year, we'll have approximately the same number of ADM, and then in a couple of years, we'll start to see that decline. So we talk about that, because with no additional ADM, there's no additional funding coming in besides what the Governor is giving. The class size and competitive salaries are super important for us. A lot of times, you know, there's two ways to fund things. You can either pay people more, or you can pay more people, because our MNO budget is almost 90% salaries and benefits. So if we go to decline, we have to reduce staff in our staffing models to be able to utilize the new money for raises. Otherwise, if we reduce ADM and we don't reduce staff, then ultimately, you're going to have to use some of that new money to cover existing staff. But right now, we're flat in the ADM area approximately. We feel like we're going to be pretty even next year, and so therefore, the money that we do have coming in, we want to make sure we have competitive salaries, and again, that we have enviable class sizes the best possible here in Arizona and the East Valley. Prop 301, we won't know the final amount for Prop 301 until the end of March, and then we'll reconvene with our teachers to look at that. But right now, a couple of things that have changed with Prop 301, there was a bill that changed last year. All of the money goes into one fund instead of three funds, and so we're trying to transition that now by putting most of the performance pay money into the contract instead of keeping a lot of that outside, so that we can have a salary that's for a beginning teacher of above $50,000. Most districts are starting to transition to that, and we are now, the second year we're able to transition to that. Worked with our Super Q Committee on that, and they'll be getting contracts with information about that. Retirement, there was a slight decrease in retirement. It's based on an average number of years, actuarial numbers, slight decrease in that, which is actually savings to our district and a savings to employees. Health insurance, we had a good year compared to inflation and the annual increase of health insurance right now. Our district is, was recommended to take a 3% increase in our health insurance premiums, and so the district is going to be able to fund that 3%, and we'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. Utilities, slight increase with that, especially as now we've built out, and our high school's in full function. We have Rice Elementary that came on. Also, insurance is part of that, too, general liability, as we have more square footage and we have more fleet. That's how our insurance is based for general liability, so that's part of that, too. It's not listed on that, but that's utilities and general liability. And then we had our new programs over $5,000 requests, and that was information that has been shared with the Board. We have details on that, that not only, we received that back from our administrators and our directors and our superintendents, but ultimately, then we take that back over that with the Budget Committee who met, and they have a recommendation, and tonight, you're going to be getting the recommendation from the Budget Committee later on. So concerns, some things we're always concerned about, kind of touched on these a minute ago, but just maintaining market share in competitive salaries. We know that we're 49th funded in the nation, but we know we have to be competitive in our classified arena and our certified arena, administrative arena, even in Arizona and the East Valley to attract and retain, but especially in that classified and certified area. Maintaining and recruiting qualified, diversified staff is important for us throughout our district. And then we know, we saw, we saw this with Katie Nash's survey and a number of other things with the survey, that we had a lot of increased needs and supports for behaviors, academics, counselors, social workers, interventionists, deans, assistant principals, district level, all of those things. We saw the need, and I don't know if that need is always generated from COVID or just generated from public education and other needs that we have in our classrooms, and not having enough funding to provide all the support that we need in our classrooms. But we saw a lot of need, and that was from all groups, classified, certified, needing more classified staff in their areas, administrators needing more staff to help with the discipline issues or behavioral needs. We saw it in every category, just need, and I think you're seeing that across America. We're seeing that everywhere in public education. So that's just something to consider as we move forward, too. That will also impact eventually our staffing models, and we're going to continue to look on that, look at that over the next year, is what do those staffing models look like to support schools that might have a bigger need in an area than another, than another school. And then family work-life balance, that's always a consideration with workloads and some of the recommendations we made. Sometimes we can't decrease the workload, but maybe we can compensate for that workload. So there's some suggestions that we've made in the budget process to compensate in a few areas. So the Governor's Budget impact, and what does that mean to CUSD? Overall, the revenue impact was for the 2% inflation, that's approximately $5.1 million with an increase due to inflation. We also, because there is an increase every year of inflation on our ADM, there's an increase in the override, because the override is 15% of your revenue control limit. So ultimately, we have a $778,000 increase on that. And then we got an increase on our Teacher Experience Index, which is the number of years that our teachers have in our district that's above and beyond what the average is for our teachers across the state. And so we had a slight increase in that. Our teachers are above and beyond that average in the state. The expenditure impact that was, that we saw with some of those things that we listed was, we got a positive increase because it was a decrease in the Arizona school retirement system. That actually helps our budget by approximately $624,000, because not only does the employee pay less, but we, as the employer, pay less. So employees will save a slight amount, and so will the district. Now, health increase, health insurance increase almost offsets that, at about $670,000 for our health insurance policy at approximately 3%. And then what we talked about just a minute ago with utilities and general liability, again, as you have more properties and number of vehicles, your general liability goes up, and inflation impacts that, too. And then also the utilities, as we've built out, and we're finally built our last school. So a couple of last slides on the MP 5000s and the Budget Committee, and then I'm going to let our Chair talk, who's Michelle Maury, get up and say a couple of words about our Budget Committee. But our MP 5000 process, like I said, starts in December. Our staff, which is Heather Cavier and Lauren Randall and Ben Pross, put together the MP 5000 requests, and they send it out to all of our principals. And then they have a few weeks to turn in their requests that are above and beyond their staffing models, that are supplies, salaries, benefits, purchase services, travel, capital needs, or building improvement needs that are outside of the ones we've already listed. So Mr. Fletcher had put together a list of about $40 million worth of needs that he presented to the Governing Board back in November. These were on top of those requests, something that we would show them. We listed all the things that were going to be impacted at their schools, and then they put in requests that might not be listed on that list. So we had $37 million worth of requests from all of our schools. At this time, the superintendents and the Budget Committee is recommending for you to approve approximately $23 million worth. MNO is approximately $16 million of that. 8.6 would be ongoing. 7.5 million of that is one-time funding. The other category is federal and like CTE, state grants. It might be community education or food service. There was $2 million of recommendations that are coming forward, and they would all be ongoing. There's a capital needs that were, that are being recommended of $2.6 million. $600,000 of that would be ongoing. $2 million of that would be one-time. And then out of our bonds for some of the needs that the principals and directors put in, there was $2.2 million that we'll be recommending between, again, the Cabinet and the Budget Committee, and all of that is one-time. Now, that's on top of the $40 million approximately that you saw in the breakout in November. So just to kind of put a couple examples in front of you of totals for the large items, just in MNO and capital. We have in MNO, the largest amounts were for salaries. The ongoing salary increase, which we're going to talk about the Super Q process, what we gave for recommending for classified, certified administration, ongoing is approximately $5.1 million. The one-time stipend, there's a stipend, and again, we're going to go over this in a minute in the Super Q process, of $1,000 for employees, probably paid out in the fall of next year, is $1,000 based on FTE and date that they started, is $5.6 million, and that's one-time, so not ongoing, it'll be one-time. Marketing costs of approximately $500,000. That would be on our one-time, not, and then we will evaluate that to see if that's something we want to continue for the future. So just one-time for next year, and then we'll need to evaluate to see if that's something that we want to continue for the future. Health insurance is an ongoing cost. That's approximately $670,000. So those are some of your largest ones. And then district-wide utilities, which we talked about before in general liability, 243. Then there's a one-time stipend for $510,000 for special education, and we're going to, again, talk about these when we get into the Super Q and additional compensation packages. But this would be one-time to try it, be $1,500 per semester for a special education teacher, and that's to help with IEPs and the extra workload that comes with those positions. Then there is some market adjustments for classified staff. We've been trying to make sure, we had adjusted a few, a year, a couple of years back, we'd made some adjustments. This is kind of to wrap up some of the adjustments that weren't looked into or reviewed, kind of the final pieces on that market adjustment for classified staff, and there's $300,000 allotted for that. That would be ongoing. The new CTE program that would be over at Oakland High School, there's about $100,000 to start up that program in supplies for this upcoming year. And then the wellness incentive went from $200 up to $400, and it's about $500,000 per $200. So that would increase, that would be one-time. We will review that again if we want to continue the wellness policy next year. It's a one-time expense for that. And then the last one is various positions. That's 2.5 million. That's everything from nurses to paraprofessionals, to some teachers, to some positions that were funded maybe from federal dollars that are now needed. We can't fund them out of federal dollars, because they're gone out of MNO, to everything from deans to academic coaches to CTE program specialists. So there's a list of those different positions that were approved that would be part of that process, too. And then on the right side, capital. There is furniture, one time, for a couple, a junior high and an elementary school. We have them on a rotation. So two schools we impact per year, and they would receive new furniture in those schools. One-to-one devices for our elementary COA students, our Chandler, our Chandler Online Academy for our younger K through six kids, so that that way, they're all on the same device, and the teacher's not trying to figure out different devices and what's going on with all of her or his students in the classroom. And so that is for the online program. To expand, Tableau or a program like Tableau for our teachers to access data and information to have more access and users. There's a few tables that are needed for our science and our CTE courses that would be placed at all of our schools. Some textbooks enhancements in a couple of our areas and a couple of our high schools. And then Chromebooks, throughout, there's some different needs of Chromebooks. Colleen Flannery is working through that process. Some of them are approved that we needed, and then she's been able to fund some of the current existing requests with her current inventory that she has. But she's coming up with a plan to implement a rotation with all of our technology, and we will hopefully be implementing that in the next fiscal year. There's some IT management software systems. There's a lot of need for some of those pieces with software within our, our school districts, so that's approximately $410,000. We have some new needs as we do a drone course for drones and for graphics in CTE. So we have approximately $200,000 for equipment or renovations potentially for the CTE program. We have needs across the district on custodial equipment, so that's probably combined all the different needs we have, approximately $300,000. And then other small items for various capital items that were requested by other schools. And you can go through the details to get every single line item on those if you want those later. This doesn't include building improvements. Building improvements, and I wanted to explain to the Board, we, it's very difficult for a principal to understand how much the cost is of something that they need renovated at their school. But to submit the form, you have to at least put a number in, and the smallest number is 5,000, or it rejects, it doesn't let you submit the number. So they have to at least put $5,000, and they're given that in the instructions. But we ask them to guess. That number is usually not accurate. Frank Fletcher has to determine, you know, go out and will actually see the scope of work and then put the number together. But we try to get an idea, so we know, is it like painting a wall or is it renovating the whole school? What is the difference when they put that request down? And so we have kind of an idea of what they're looking at or what they're requesting, but those numbers aren't very accurate until Frank gets involved in that. And that's why a lot of those are still under consideration, is because Frank and his team are analyzing each of those schools' requests. All right, before I hand it over to Wendy to talk, I'm going to introduce to you Michelle Maury. She is our Budget Committee Chair voted on by the Budget Committee. We, and I'm going to let her talk about the Budget Committee and their recommendation. And we're super thankful for Michelle. She's been with us for a number of years, and we're very thankful for her service.
Thank you, Lana. Hopefully, you guys can hear me okay. Good evening, members of the Board, Ms. Narducci, nice to everybody this evening. I'm Michelle Maury. I've been working with the Budget Committee since 2012, when I was a dean in Chandler. I've also been working with the Bond and Override Committee since then as well, and most recently the last couple times with the Bonds and Overrides, I've been the chairperson for that. So two kids in Chandler, super involved in this work, and find this work to be very, very important. So we had really healthy discussion. I know you guys have the recommendation summary report, so I'm not going to read it verbatim. But essentially, we had three meetings. The structure of the meetings was just general overview. We find that there's a real need for education on just school expenditures and school budgets, because it's very different from other budgets. Teachers and administrative staff were encouraged to attend. We had a lot of parents and other stakeholders, community members with us as well. A lot of great questions. Lana does an amazing job of presenting information in terms that are understandable if you're not in the education field, so kudos to her. So you guys kind of have the, the structure here, but the first meeting was really centered around just that budget overview from a school's perspective, whereas the second meeting was centered around kind of getting more granular within P 5000s, answering questions about that. And then everyone was encouraged to kind of look over those recommendations further and bring any questions back to the third meeting. Some questions, I think there were some individual opportunities for people to reach out to Lana directly for some questions that they had that were answered as well. Let's see. And then during the third budget meeting is when they elected the Budget Committee Chair, and I was unanimously selected for that. So here I am. And I wanted to say that the work I do, other than being a parent, which is the most important work, is I am a building principal in another district, and so I just want to highlight that the recommendations that have been put forward are truly impressive, and I really feel that they're both staff and student-centered. And so when we're looking at all of, just, just the implications even from special education standpoint, with all of the time that's required, the fact that they're carving out monies and time for those teachers, it really is student and staff-centered. So just want to felt the need to say that. Okay, so there were a couple of different scenario recommendations and healthy conversation around the retention stipend. But overall, when it went to a vote, I went ahead and collected those votes, and it was pretty much unanimous in regards to making sure that everyone received that retention stipend as well. Lana touched a little bit on the findings in terms of the MP 5000s, and as far as the salary and benefits increase, our proposal is to support the Super Q Committee's salary and benefits recommendation, which is listed in here, and I think that's it. Anything else?
All right. Thank you for your time.
Mrs. Maury, thank you so much for serving as the Committee Chair and coming this evening to give us the presentation. We appreciate it.
Absolutely. It's nice to see you.
And also to the, forgot to also say, to the entire committee who spent three evenings with a lot of time looking over this stuff, so thank you.
Well, I'm going to jump in here and now continue with our inter-based bargaining committee that met. We refer to it as Super Q. This year, we changed a few things. We enlarged the group that came. We expanded our support staff membership so we could get more representation of them. We included a building-level administrator instead of just district office administration. And again, we had our teachers. We also utilized, as we run through this process, each of those groups has a chance to tell their story and some background of what they're thinking and what they're, they're living daily in their lives and experiences in their, in their work jobs. In addition, we had some great feedback we got from staff surveys that were sent out that were very helpful as we were prioritizing needs within the district. So our recommendations tonight are as follows. A 4% raise for classified staff. We realized that there's some impact in competing with the market around us, and we really needed to do some work in that area to try and strengthen it. 2% to certified and administrative staff into their base salaries. $400 wellness incentive for qualifying employees. This is a program where we have those staff that are interested can undergo certain wellness activities to earn this $400 that then go towards medical deductibles or their HSAs. The $1,000 retention stipend, the one change in this from this past year is it's prorated this year. So last year, it was a flat $1,000 to everybody, but it was agreed that it will be equivalent to their FTE. So if they're a .6, or a .8, or a 1.0, we're looking at distributing that at the beginning, towards the beginning of second quarter this next year. 3% health insurance employer contribution. This 3% will ensure that the employee, their own benefit package, will not receive any increases. So that will cover it, and the employee won't fill that. There will be an increase if they happen to carry dependents. They will see that at 3% on their dependent area. But it did allow us to reach all the employees. 2,500 of the pay-for-performance typically, this past year, we had 3,200 in our pay-for-performance. 2,500 of that is going to be shifted instead of awarding it at the end of the year for qualifying criteria. It's being moved into the base. So that will be shifted. We will still have $700 for pay-for-performance at the end of the year with those qualifying goals. And then continuing the $600 Journey 2025 stipend, again, that is prorated by their FTE equivalent. In addition, in our Super Q recommendations, we also had some non, I shouldn't say non, we had some other recommendations for committee work that to be explored, to be focused on, to get feedback, and see if any changes are needed. So we have a committee review of planning time assessment that are given at each of the different grade levels, staffing ratios across the board, looking at consistency and equity, and special education challenges. So Mr. Narducci is assigning leads for those committees, and some follow-up will be provided on those. We had additional administrative recommendations that were put forth through the MP 5000 We had additional administrative recommendations that were put forth through the NP5000 process. We had the market adjustment for classified, that was the $300,000. Coaching stipends had not received any adjustments over the last several years, many of our coaches were making under the minimal, minimum hourly wage, so we had recommendations to update that coaching stipend to the current market, make sure we were paying accurately. Community title preschool schedule adjustment, our special ed preschool teachers were on the current teacher's salary, our community and title preschools were on a different, a little bit lower preschool schedule, and that's basically due to their funding source. We have a grant on one and we have a tuition base on the other. Meeting with those two schools, or those two departments, we had a recommendation to move that starting salary up to the starting base of our K through 12 teachers. We do have a cap on the end, just on what those grants could afford, but it gets them up competitive with the other K-12 teachers. We have a dual enrollment stipend of $250 per course per semester. Currently, the state funds some stipends for AP exams and IB exams that meet qualifying levels, this is in support of our dual enrollment stipends, it's, it will be funded out of the dual enrollment funds that we get back from our students participating. Special education compliance stipend, this is a one-time, we're piloting it this year to be reviewed at the end of the year. This would be paid out half in the first semester, half in the second semester, looking at compliance and completion of all their IEP work and paperwork and processes and meetings that they have to complete. That's a total of $3,000 possible for each of those staff members. Reduction in wait period for enrollment as a new hire, currently we have had, they have to wait 60 days for enrollment, with our plan, we have been working to get it down to 30 days, to make it a shorter time that people might have to access COBRA or come in off other insurance. The contracts that you'll be voting on tonight, changes from last year to this year, currently past salaries just listed their base salary for each employee. We felt as we're moving towards transparency, in the past, those base salaries have always included monies from maintenance and operation, monies from the classroom site fund, monies from alternate funding sources. We thought it's good for employees to start seeing our, our certified staff, what that percentage really is, so on the contract they'll now see it reflected, here's their total base and how much money is from maintenance and operations and how much money is, comes from other funding sources. We did add in verbiage, when we started this contract, we weren't sure what was going to happen with the aggregate expenditure limit and 301 funding, this would be under the salary reduction possibility paragraph. We left this verbiage in because ultimately this is going to come up again next year unless the legislature takes another look at it. So, this is just saying if we didn't receive the funds expected, that there could have been a possible salary reduction. And then we had in our support staff, the furlough verbiage previously read 20 days, and we lowered that down to 10 days to mirror what the certified and administrative numbers Benefit package renewal, also coming to you tonight, we have a recommended increase to the medical plan, that 3% employer contribution the district will absorb. The dental and ancillary saw no increase at all, vision is actually decreasing. And then new employee access to insurance, again, we're shortening that to 30 days. We have and are working with our insurance on a clinical advocacy program, this is an RN that will work with claims and employees, helping them get the best deals and services and help them limit the increment of additional costs that may not be necessary. It does not in any way limit their selection of what they want to do, but it's an advisory that can help advocate for them. It's already been in a pilot program with the trust, they saved, how much money?
1.5 million.
1.5 million by the use of it, so we are going to have one particularly for Chandler now. Improved pharmacy benefit manager contract, they've been negotiating with Maxar to work with that. And continued administrative relief for CUSD because we have partners with Kairos, they help take the manpower of some of the paperwork and negotiations that need to take place. So our timeline is as follows, tonight, we're bringing forward the budget committee recommendation for approval, the Super Q committee recommendation for approval, the contract language approval, the benefit package renewal and approval. Certified staff contracts, that's actually, I'm going to tell you, there's one change from what's on this slide, the administrative, we were able to bring you tonight as well, so certified and administrative are coming to you tonight. April 13th, it will be the support staff language approval and support staff contracts and contract, support staff contract approval. June 22nd, we will have the formal proposed budget for '22, '23 school year, and July 13th, we'll come back to you for the adopted budget approval. Do you have any questions for us?
Thank you, Dr. Nance. I do have one question. You were mentioning earlier that the retention stipend and the Journey 2020 stipend were going to be prorated based on the FTE. I know that in previous years, the Journey 2020 stipend was, there were only two levels, if you were halftime or if you were below halftime, you got half of it, and if you were above halftime, you got the full stipend. But when you mentioned the retention stipend, you were talking about like if you were .8 FTE, you got .8, how is that working?
Well, the reason we looked at it, we actually looked at both ways, the Journey 2025 is either 600 or 300, if you're 20 hours or less, you get the 300. In looking at our employees for the retention stipend, we did look at, it's in their benefit and we could afford to do the point FTE equivalent, because it does get some of our employees that are, for instance, our paraprofessionals will never be eight hours, their positions only go six or six and a half, so instead of decreasing them to half of it, they're at least going to get two-thirds of it, and it increases the amount that's going to go in their pocket.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions from the board? Ms. Love?
Can you explain the dual enrollment stipend? I had somebody ask me a question about that earlier, and to my understanding, only certain subjects get, or as it is now, certain subjects get the stipend, is there a change with that? Or explain that for me so I can understand?
So the APIB does have certain subjects from the state that's paid out for the CCEIP funds. Dual enrollment, it depends on each site, Dr. Gilbert can weigh in as well, but we have different subjects that qualify for equivalent courses at our community colleges, and so depending on the certification of the teachers, we have it at the site sometimes impacts what may or may not be offered. But those who are doing a duplicate, running their own course with us and then also working with the university to make sure it ensures for college credit, those students are paying for the dual enrollment, so because they're having to meet the college requirements as well, we were looking at the funds that were available back to us, so for each course that's registered each semester, so if, you know, I'm Ms. Nance and I have three courses, I'm going to get the equivalent of 250 times three for the first semester, get it in for the second semester depending on how many.
Okay, and so it'll be paid out per student, or is it per course or?
Per course.
Okay, and then will it be paid, be paid out based on the number of students who pass the exam?
It will not, it will, because they have to set it up and with the university and community, or community colleges, regardless of if they have one or three or if they pass the class, we made it per course rather than per student.
Okay, and then will it be paid out per semester?
Correct, so it'll be paid out first semester in December and second semester in May.
Okay, sorry, I'm like reading down this long list of questions that somebody sent me, and I was like, oh, ask them tonight. Will they also receive a CCEIP, receive CCEIP money in addition to the dual enrollment stipend, because some classes qualify for both?
Sure, we do have some teachers who are running a dual enrollment, and then also it's a joint AP class, they would be eligible for the state funding for the CCEIP if, if they have qualifying scores on the AP exams.
What does the average teacher receive for the CCEIP?
Oh, well, I'm, I'm going to guess right now because I don't have that in front of me, but our, our range typically in the past has been anywhere from $150 to $300, all the way up to $12,000. The law did change where it doesn't go 100% to the teacher anymore, so we have a 70/30 split, 70% of the half will go to the teacher, the other 30% is split among the department, so I'd have to go back and look at what the max this year would be.
Is that about comparable to the dual enrollment stipend?
It, it depends on how many sections the person has.
Okay.
It, it's based off of a certain number that they have to have to pass, different classes have different numbers, so whether they have to fit three or four to pass, and then it's how many kids pass, and then how many sections, you multiply that, it can be a lot bigger than the dual enrollment stipend.
Okay, and then when?
It has unlimited, I mean, the funds are associated by student for that one, they're allocated to us.
Okay, and then when will those stipends be paid out?
For the CCEIP?
Yes.
We typically, we have to wait for the state to issue it to us, then we have 30 days from there that we try to do the turnaround. We just got notification at the end of last week that the funds have dropped, so we're working on notifying teachers to make sure there's no errors on the number of tests that they're showing and the number of tests that we're getting from the state, because sometimes things can get lost and/or the inappropriate teacher got tagged, and then once that's clear, it'll be paid out, we probably anticipate beginning of April.
Okay, and then I guess I'll ask one more question, I don't want to take it up, but what if you leave the district after a semester at the end of the year before the stipends are paid out?
So are you talking for the, both, I'll, I'll walk you through both of them. So the dual enrollment, if you left before the semester is up, you would not be paid that stipend. The CCEIP, if you left after the tests were given, you can still get paid out, but if you weren't there when the actual tests were assessed, it wouldn't be tagged back to you.
Okay, I'm going to let everybody else go and then I'll save these for later.
Mrs. Bruner, I think you had some questions?
Yeah. So I did want to thank you for the dual enrollment stipend, Dr. Gilbert and I have been talking about, there's a lot of opportunity there for our students that we could hopefully motivate more staff, it is a lot of work to get the credits for that, so I appreciate that we're making steps in that direction. You, you did say per course, did you mean per section or per course?
I was, I was saying per course, per section, same thing, in our terminology.
And then the wellness incentive, I heard you say that it's, can only be applied for insurance or HSAs, is that the only way?
Or towards their PPO.
Yeah, so it goes into their, it goes, it would go into their health savings account and then they would use it like they do with their typical HSA account, so it could be used for premiums, for medical needs that they have, all those.
So if, if someone wanted to do something proactive for their health, would that be allowed to be used or no? For example, go, you know, to gym membership or something like that?
I don't, I don't believe so, but we can ask that question, I think it's actual medical needs or premiums.
We're, we're working right now, we've had our list, we have, we're working with our Kairos board to look at what are things that could impact and help us be proactive on working with illnesses or diagnosing them earlier, so we're looking at a full list of what we can use for recommendations for next year.
I think it would be a great opportunity to expand that to, you know, things to prevent disease, not just to deal with it after the fact. And then I, I did hear you mention that there's talk of having other subcommittees, and I just wanted to mention once again that I feel that there is a strong need in the district for a non-budgetary process for our employees, so that they feel that the district is responsive to their needs and there's a way to communicate those in a formal process where solutions can, can be developed quickly that are not related to budgetary matters, since that's what Super Q focuses on. So I just wanted to mention my desire to see that happen. And then, I'm trying to be really quick here, the special ed stipends, also I wanted to thank the group for addressing this, this has been coming up for many years in pretty much every district, not just Chandler, the difficulty we have with recruiting and retaining teachers in, of students with special needs, and I think this is a good first step. I think we also need to look at making their job manageable. Another option might be to look at the parapros who work with them and the number of hours that they're given, if there's a way that, that might be analyzed for cer, at least certain classrooms where it could be really helpful for the teacher to have maybe a half hour more per day of that person working with them, and I, and I know that's an expense as well, but just throwing that out there. Thank you.
Mr. Olive, did you have any questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Okay. Dr. Nance, I think, aren't the HSAs, aren't the rules for withdrawals regulated by the federal government and that we're very limited in what we can expand HSA distributions to do to those rules?
Yes, you're, you are right with that. One thing I think that's going to be helpful in the future for us is to work through our wellness committee on things to prevent, so we're going to use that nurse advocate, advocate that we are going to be contracting with, with Kairos to really help us find ways to really impact our employees that actually make a big difference. We believe the wellness policy is a great thing and it works, but we don't know because it's hard to form data, but the HSA definitely has rules that are governed specifically and that we can alter from, but we're trying to figure out how on the wellness policy, how do we make the biggest impact for that? It does go into the HSA and they have to spend according to the HSA. I think our bigger challenge is, we're going to try to figure out, how do we take this wellness policy and really do something great with it, work with our committees and our groups and our nurse practitioner to help us make it better for the future.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Love, did you have another question or two?
I'll, I'll say Victor.
Oh, okay.
I want to take up some more time.
All right. Are there any other comments, questions? Okay. Thank you so much, I know a lot of work has been put into all of the presentations and all of the individuals who've served on the various committees, both our wellness committee and our benefits committee, the budget committee, the Super Q committee, and there's been a lot of, a lot of time put into that by a large number of people to make all this happen, so thank you very much, and I want to thank all of those individuals who also contributed their time and efforts to make all that happen, so thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
We will now take about a 10-minute break and we'll reconvene at 7:00 PM.